Next on the agenda is the 2024 preliminary budget presentation. I'll ask our township manager, Bob Pellegrino, and the township's finance director, Julie Neriessi, to take their seat at the table and have at it.
It's that time of year when I have to present. Oh, mics. Thank you. I'll start over. Good evening, everyone. It's that time of year when I have to present the 2024 budget. And tonight, I'm going to talk about public safety, which is the number one item on lots of people's minds at this time. So let's get going with the presentation. This slide shows, and the board knows this, you all know this, but for the public's benefit, I wanted to show them that the second-class township code, which is the state law that governs the way we operate and gives us the authority to do what we do, has two sections that grant the board authority. The first section, the duties of the supervisors, charges them with public safety, and the operative words are securing the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the township. In the general power section, it again repeats the board's obligation to maintain peace, good government, and the health and safety, health, welfare, and safety of the township residents. And I point this out because I know that this board has taken this task very seriously in the past, and this budget will continue your support of those critical public services. And I don't know if many people know what the second-class township code is. There are different codes that govern how different communities operate. We are a township of the second class, certainly not a second-class township, and there's a big distinction there. So I'm going to talk about, tonight, four general areas of the budget. I want to talk about public safety first. Talk about police, fire, emergency medical services, roads, and a little bit about our trash collection contract, because under the health portion of the requirement, that is a big ticket item for us. I'm going to give you a brief financial summary of the budget. I'm going to talk about, as I do every year, a little bit about the infrastructure projects that are going on. You just heard, you just had an approval, thank you, for the grant application to extend our trail system, which has been an ongoing project since we adopted a master trail plan in, I believe, 2018. And then I'll end with a little bit of discussion about our real estate taxes and where we are with that. So I'm going to start first with police protection. And I know there's a lot of discussion, maybe in this community, certainly in the Commonwealth and across the nation, about crime. And I want to tell you tonight, if you look at this chart, that this community is a safe community. Yes, we have crime, but if you look at the numbers from 2018 to 2022, and let me qualify these, these are numbers and statistics that are reported to the FBI clearinghouse by every police department across the country. And you can clearly see in Part 1 and Part 2 crimes and our total crimes that we're actually down in number of crimes from 2018. If you look at the totals, 577 reported crimes and 447 in 2022. So that is very good news, I think, for the residents of this community. It's a credit to our police department. They do a phenomenal job in protecting the citizens of this township. On that chart, you also see clearance rates. Those are the rates that are cleared by the detective division of the police department, the crimes that are solved. You see it's about 50%. I'll tell you that it's 50% because there are a lot of, what we're seeing is an increase in fraud and mail theft. We don't have a lot of serious crime, but we do have a significant increase in fraud and mail theft. A lot of those crimes are very difficult to solve. Sometimes they're internet-based, sometimes it's mail being stolen out of mailboxes, checks being washed, and that sort of thing. And so those are a little bit more difficult to solve, so you see the clearance rate is around 50%. Part 1 crimes, just for reference, are the more serious crimes. Part 2 crimes are less serious crimes. But I wanted to let everyone know that the criminal activity in this community is relatively low. We don't have a lot of serious crimes, and we have more, a Part 2 crimes, if you will, much more fraud and mail theft going on right now. And also theft from porches, from front porches, we're seeing a lot of that, delivery people. We just had an incident where someone ordered new cell phones, and the Ring camera saw the package being dropped off, and about three minutes later, someone came and grabbed them. So these are things that are planned, and they do happen. So residents need to be aware that those things are happening. It's great to have Ring cameras on the front doors and around your house, and just be aware that if you do order packages, pay attention to when they're being delivered and make sure you pick them up right away. Our staffing in our police department right now is at 44 sworn officers with about 12 civilian employees working in the department in administrative positions. I see a need going forward to increase that. Right now, we have, on average, 5.2 officers on any one shift in this community. Now, that sounds like maybe it's enough, but when you look at a 26-square-mile community and you divide that into five sectors, it's not really a lot. And on top of that, if our officers are tied up on a traffic accident, generally one or two officers are involved with that, that number gets reduced for the rest of the coverage in the township. So I see a need going forward, not next year, but in 2025 and 2026, to increase our staffing. We can do that, we can increase that by one on each squad, by resigning some officers, and by adding two new police officers to the force. The third officer that I think we need to consider hiring would be to add a school resource officer in the Holland Middle School. We are in discussions right now with the school district administration. I don't know where the administration is with its board, but I think it's something that this township ought to seriously consider. There are north of 1,200 students in that school. We do have a school resource officer in the high school, and I can tell you that that officer is busy. I think year-to-date, we've had more than 130 incidents in the high school that that officer has addressed. And that officer also, along with our officers on patrol, do respond to incidents at the middle school. So that's something else that I think going forward, with cooperation from the school district and our shared funding arrangement that we have, similar to the one in the high school, we can add a school resource officer in the middle school. As far as equipment is concerned, our officers are well-equipped. Most recently, we replaced all of our body cam, body cameras and our in-car cameras. We're in the process of replacing those. I point that out because when you think about those things, you don't realize that in order to do that for the size of our force, it's $500,000 to do that. Fortunately for us, we did get a grant for $200,000 to help offset that cost, but we've had these body cameras, the first set we had, we had for five years. As the technology updates, we have to replace the hardware, and as the software updates, that gets updated as well. There's a cost. We were fortunate, we had an agreement where we had replaced these devices over a five-year period without paying interest on the payments, and so we're paying these off over the next five years in yearly installments. Two years ago, we were lucky enough to have officers step up and be willing to handle a canine, so now we have two wonderful dogs, canine unit. They have been used over and over again to help find missing persons, to help in burglaries, and all kinds of other things, and they are a real asset to the police department, and I know the officers are very happy to have them. And one unusual thing in our police department is our quality-of-life unit. This is a separate unit in the department that handles non-emergency concerns, resident concerns, traffic investigations, accident investigations, they do speed studies. When you see all those little speed timing devices placed all around the township, this is the unit that does that. And they track speeding. When we get reports or concerns expressed to us by residents, it's passed on to this unit. They deploy those devices. We get speed information, and we're able to target patrols to control, hopefully control motor speeding. One of the critical things I want to mention about our police department is that it was established in 1964, and it grew as the township grew. Over the years, as we developed new properties, as people moved in, as our population increased, the police department increased, up to the point now where we have 44 officers, and again, I'm recommending that we expand that to 47. I mention that because that did not happen in the fire service. And I'm going to talk about that now. For 115 years, we had a volunteer fire company, and we still do, and there still are volunteers that help us every day in keeping this community safe. And we certainly don't want to disparage their service. But it's come to a point, and this is a national concern, and throughout this Commonwealth, that there's been a serious decline in volunteerism over the last 30 years. In the '70s, there were 300,000 volunteers in this Commonwealth. Today, there's less than 30,000. This community, like every other community in Bucks County and across the state, has seen a significant decline in volunteerism, to the point where we now, you, the board, have taken the critical steps of securing public safety and the welfare, health, and health, safety, and welfare of the citizens by increasing the staffing and developing and creating a paid fire department. And right now, there are 22 paid firefighters in our department, and next year, with the completion of our station in Holland, we will have 24/7 coverage out of both stations. Today, the 22 people who are employed at the Richborough Station and the temporary firehouse, I'll say, do provide 24/7 coverage throughout the entire community. The concern is that this is a very large township geographically, and in order to provide proper fire safety protection, we need to staff two locations in the township. And that's exactly what this budget will do. Next year, this budget will provide staffing for both the Richborough and Holland fire stations. Now, I'll mention, too, that while we are taking these necessary steps, and while we are ahead of other communities in taking these necessary public safety steps, we are not ahead of the curve. We should have, over the last, and it's really nobody's fault, but we should have considered slowly, like we did with the police department, adding paid staff to our fire department. We started in 2008 with four paid firefighters. That was a critical change because it allowed us to provide service during the day, Monday through Friday, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. or 5:00, I think it was 8:00 to 5:00, service when volunteers who have regular full-time jobs weren't able to get to the fire station and get out of the station to the fires. That was extremely helpful. We should have added to that initial staff over the next couple of years. We didn't. We waited 10 years until 2018 to start to boost the staffing at the fire station, and we took it to 11 in 2018, and just recently added staff to Richborough to take it to the 22. So we have three fire stations. And by the way, Chief Salisker, when he was volunteer chief for the last 25 years and since I've been here, since 2007, every year, he's been telling me that we have a problem with volunteerism, and we need to start to consider increasing the staffing in the fire department, but it just didn't happen. We have three fire stations. Station 3 is in Richborough, Station 73 is in Holland, and Station 83 is in Churchville. So when this budget is adopted, if it's adopted in its present form, we will continue to provide 24/7 coverage out of Station 3. We will add staffing in next year to provide 24/7 coverage out of Holland, and Station 83 in Churchville, and that whole area will be serviced by the full-time paid staff in Richborough, but will still be supplemented by those volunteers who are willing to serve, and they will operate out of Station 83. That facility also serves as our fire department training center. And it is a training center that was a facility that was constructed on federal lands under an agreement with the federal government when the property was given to the township, and our obligation to them is to maintain that station as a training center and still have it as a volunteer station. By the way, the pictures you see on this slide are our fire department, employees, and volunteers. In the top picture, they are rescuing an individual from his roof. You can see his house is on fire. And the lower picture is our marine unit in the fire station doing some training. I think that's in the Nishamani Creek. So our fire stations, as you know, are under construction. We expect that in January, by the end of January, both stations will be complete. The picture on the left is the Holland Fire Station. The picture on the right is the Richborough Fire Station. We are, and there's been some chatter, I've heard, we are beyond the completion dates in our contract. We are dealing with that issue with the contractor, but we are not over budget. I'll repeat that. We are not over budget. I've heard some rumor that we are. Sometimes people think that because we're behind schedule, it costs us more money. That is not the case here. We are on budget, we are on target to be where we were financially when we planned these projects. So I want to make that clear to the public. So the fire companies will be moving into these facilities as soon as they're complete. I think our plan, and it served us well, for the old police station to serve as a temporary facility, was a great thing to have at the time. We didn't realize we were going to need it, but it worked out very well. So I think we got a real good deal by using that building. Want to talk next about emergency medical services. You all know that Tri-Hampton Rescue Squad is our service provider. This board designated them service provider for the entire township. They are an organization, a private organization, that operates in Northampton, Upper Southampton, and Lower Southampton townships. They have served us well. They have a facility in Richborough on Township Road. They did not have a facility in Holland, but did operate out of the former Holland Fire Station at times, and at times, they had, what do they call it, a floating unit that was in the area in order to be able to respond to calls. One of the biggest things in emergency response is response time. And like the fire company, and I should have mentioned this before, the ability to have two locations cuts down on the response time significantly. Think about this. If we have, if we only had firefighters and EMTs, or paramedics, I should say, in Richborough, it's a 12-minute ride to certain sections of Holland. That's too long to wait. Fires double every 30 seconds. Think about that, every 30 seconds. So if you have a burning home, every 30 seconds, that fire is doubling in size. So it's critical that our emergency responders get on scene as quickly as possible. We've seen that happen out of the Richborough Station with our firefighters. We've seen it happen out of the Richborough Station, the rescue squad station with Tri-Hampton. We need to do the same thing in Holland, and we will do the same thing in Holland next year. We do get a response, and we do get some mutual aid from adjacent communities, but remember that they are experiencing the same volunteer shortage, and if you follow what's going on in adjacent communities, all of those places are adding paid staff to their fire service and still relying on paid staff for emergency medical services. So this slide shows that we have service in Richborough. Our Holland Rescue Services will now have a home in the new fire station in Holland. So there'll be an ambulance unit from Tri-Hampton based there, and we are increasing funding in this budget to Tri-Hampton to be able to provide that unit in-station from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. That is not, those are not the hours they are available right now. We are increasing their hours and paying them more to provide that increased service. I'll add that that doesn't mean Holland or Richborough or any other part of the township is left without initial response, because all of our firefighters are emergency medical technicians, and in addition to that, we have plans next year to have all of our firefighters trained for active shooter incidents. In those situations, the firefighters will be at these, fortunately, if we, hopefully we don't have any, but if we do, there'll be the people who will go in and tend to the injured once the police have cleared a certain area. There still may be active shooting or an active shooter in a facility, but the firefighters will get there quick, quickly. And so in Holland, next year, Tri-Hampton will be in-station once that facility is built, and they will have 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. in-unit, in-station service. Those hours are critical because those, according to Tri-Hampton, are the hours where they have the most calls, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So I want to mention that, and this budget, if you approve it, will enhance all of these public safety services, particularly fire and emergency medical services. I'm going to switch it up here a little bit, talk about Public Works. This board, a number of years ago, decided to right the ship and put more resources into our road paving program and established a goal of paving 10 miles or micro-surfacing 10 miles of our road system every year. So I think I've probably mentioned this in the past, but we have 182 miles of township-owned roads. Think about that, 182 miles. That's from here almost to State College, Pennsylvania. That's about 200 miles, and I know that because I went to Penn State, and I know how far it is. So this budget, again, has additional funding for roads because we want to maintain that 10-mile goal. And so we have, like everyone else, experienced cost increases. The price of oil affects how much it costs us to pave our roads, and so we had to increase funding for roads in order to maintain that 10-mile goal, and this budget does that. Our Public Works Department does a phenomenal job. I think you all agree that when it comes to snow plowing, there's not a department in this region that does as good of a job as our Public Works Department. They are, they are just phenomenal. But that's not all they do. They take care of our stormwater management system. All of those little inlets in the roads that you see are all connected to pipes. There's 5,600 of them in this township, and there's 110 miles of storm sewer piping underground that you don't really see. That's all connected to 125 detention basins throughout the community that we mow, by the way, and that's what Public Works does. They don't mow all of them. We're trying to naturalize some of them. They mow at least 85 of the 125. And they also take care of building and facility maintenance. We have a lot of buildings and a lot of facilities. We're continually replacing our HVAC units. We're trying to improve our energy efficiency in our buildings by improving lighting systems, and Public Works and that department handles all of that for us. They coordinate with contractors when they're not doing the work, or they do, in most cases, a lot of the work with their own, with our own forces. And you see stormwater management there in MS4. I'm just going to touch on that for a minute because it's part of our stormwater management system. MS4 stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, because the state has to have an acronym for everything, so that's what they came up with. It's actually pretty creative. But MS4 is an unfunded, I'll say that again, an unfunded mandate from the Commonwealth to, to reduce, in our particular case, phosphorus and sediment from our storm water management system. So what's involved with that is testing on an annual basis 25% of the outfall structures in our detention basins, testing that water, testing the sediment content, testing the phosphorus content, and they come up with a formula that says we need to reduce the levels of that over a five-year period. And we've, we need to do that, or one of the recommended ways to do that is to naturalize some of our detention basins so that the water that's retained filters into the ground and does not flow into the Nishamani Creek, where most of our outfall goes. This is This is millions of dollars. We've been doing it slowly. We just completed retrofitting one basin, thanks to our engineers' office. And we have grant applications in to do one more. But we get a permit for our stormwater management system from the Commonwealth. And that permit says that we are going to reduce our phosphorus and our sediment by, I believe it's 10%, over the next five years. So we're making every effort to try and achieve that goal. But it is very costly, and we are trying to do this with federal and state dollars. So a little bit about MS4. It's something that is sort of under the radar, but every community across the Commonwealth has to deal with it. And we are dealing with it as best as we can without putting too much of a financial burden on the taxpayers of the community. Just want to touch briefly on trash service. As you know, we changed contractors in January. But more importantly, we went from a manual collection system to an automated service for most of the community. And this is sort of a before-and-after picture. What it did for us by going to automated service was make it cleaner and more efficient. And I have heard nothing but positive comments about the service that we are getting from Whitetail Disposal. We are very pleased with their service. The number of complaints we receive in the township office for missed collections and other trash-related concerns has dropped to next to nothing. And so that is a very good sign. You made a very good decision to hire a new contractor and switch, more importantly, switch to the automated service. So I'm going to get into the financials a little bit about the budget, but not a whole lot. Our total budget for next year, proposed budget, is $60.6 million. $41.3 million is for our operations. That's police, fire, emergency services, planning and zoning, Public Works, parks and recreation, and so forth. We did something a little different next year in the budget by breaking out the proprietary funds. And to explain what that is, in our second-class township code and the way our auditors do our books, the trash service that we provide, the trash fund, and the operation of the Country Club are considered proprietary funds, meaning they're business-like activities that are designed to be self-supporting. So in the trash example, we charge a fee. We pay that contractor out of the fee, and it should be somewhat equal in the revenue coming in and the costs going out. The same thing with the Country Club. The fees that are charged for service pay for the cost of the operation. So those are what proprietary funds are. And I did that, we separated that out this year to separate it from operations because it just inflates the cost of our operation. And I think because they're business-like activities, it's better to show them separately. We also have proposed in this budget $3.8 million for capital. These are, and I'll get into that in the next few slides, infrastructure projects. We did have to cut $1.6 million out of our capital budget next year because we didn't have the funding available. Some of that was equipment, vehicles, and Public Works equipment. Hopefully, we get back on track in 2025 because there is a value to keeping our fleet in good condition. It costs us less to maintain. It's safer for the employees to operate. So we want to be cognizant of that. And then we have $2.5 million, which is for our pension obligations. And that's across the whole township, so $60.6 million. These are the additional public safety appropriations in the 2024 budget. $2.5 million for fire service. Remember, we're staffing up. I mentioned adding hours in Holland, $580,000 to the Rescue Squad for that service. And on an annual basis, increases, just ordinary increases in our police department, cost about a half a million dollars. Those are wage increases, vehicles, equipment, and so forth. So frankly, that is, these are the biggest cost differences between 2023 and 2024. Again, this budget is all about public safety. This chart shows appropriations by department. And if you look at those three blue pieces of pie, those are police, fire EMS services, and roads, streets and highways. About 45% of the total township appropriations go to those three functions. Another 14% are for refuse collection. And I point that out because, again, your charge as supervisors is the health, safety, and welfare of the community. And that is exactly where we are putting a significant portion of our tax dollars. This chart, I think it's interesting because it shows that as a service industry, our biggest expense are the employees. And you can see that 48% of the cost of the budget is wages and employee benefits. We are approaching, and maybe people don't know this, 200 full-time employees in this community, in this organization. I don't know if people realize how big this township is. But these are the folks that keep us safe, that keep our roads clear, and that provide all of the other services, recreation services, and so forth, that people enjoy. And I think this is one of the best charts we have. I'm going to talk a little bit about infrastructure. And you've heard me probably talk about these projects for five years. They seem to be the never-ending projects, but I can assure you that we are making progress. We have two roundabouts in the works, one at Township Road and Bustleton Pike, another at Jacksonville Road and Alms House Road. We have a street skate project on Buck Road between Holland Road and Old Bristol Road. And we have a sidewalk project on Second Street Pike between the Old Wawa and Tanyard Road. These are, at this point, state-funded projects putting back $29 million of infrastructure investment into the township. And I am very proud of that because this township is, as far as I know, the only community in the county that has state-funded projects funded by the State Transportation Improvement Program. It's very difficult to get projects on the tip, they call it the tip. We have three of them. And while it's taken years and some investment on our part to do preliminary engineering through the good help of our friends at the County Planning Commission, our state legislators, we've managed to get three projects on the tip, which means that, once we did our preliminary engineering, the state picks up final engineering, the cost of that, and pays for all the construction costs of the project. So these three projects, at least, are on the tip. And the Ironworks Creek Sidewalk Project was a grant. So I'm very proud of our efforts in bringing this money back to the township. So you may hear me say that again next year because I can mention, too, going back to these projects, it looks like the way the timing is going, most of the work, with the exception of Ironworks Creek, which we hope will get done next year, we're just waiting for PennDOT to bid it out. The other three projects, we expect, will be under construction in 2025, maybe late '25, '26. Then we have a number of pedestrian safety projects. Remember, it's all about public safety. We have a Phase 2 of the Richborough Sidewalk Project. Phase 1, you see, completed in downtown Richborough with all the sidewalk connections we made a couple of years ago. Phase 2 takes all of our sidewalks out into neighborhoods and connects neighborhoods to make it walkable into town. We are waiting right now for a grant, to hear if we've been awarded a grant for the Phase 2 Richborough Sidewalk Projects. We've asked for, I believe, $980,000 in grants. The project from Rockway to Tyler State Park Trail, and I'll show you where that is in the next slide, goes from St. Leonard's Road down along Newtown Richborough Road, by the playhouse and under the bridge, and ties into Tyler State Park that way. We had a $900,000 grant to pay for the cost of construction for that project, and that is currently in design. The Fur Drive Pedestrian Crossing is another safety measure that will put a flashing warning signal at Fur Drive to be able to safely cross Newtown Richborough Road and connect into Tyler State Park and hopefully, our Civic Center, which is the subject of the next project, which is Number 1 Lane Trail Connection. You just authorized tonight a grant application for that project. And again, we're asking for just under $1 million with no required match for that project. And we'll just keep our fingers crossed that we're successful. And then last is a new traffic signal at St. Leonard's Road and Newtown Richborough Road. That is a project that is in design. And we expect to put that project and the Fur Drive Pedestrian Crossing project out to bid early next year. So look forward to a new traffic light on Newtown Richborough Road. We were successful, by the way, in getting a Green Light Go grant that will tie out St. Leonard's, the new signal on St. Leonard's, the signal at Holland Road, and the signal at Spring Mill Hill Road together so that we can time those signals appropriately and keep traffic moving along that stretch of the roadway system. So I mentioned before the trail connection from Rockway to Tyler Park. And I don't know if this laser pointer is going to work. And it doesn't. But, I don't think, oh, yes, it doesn't, no, it doesn't, barely. So if you can see this, maybe not see it at home. There's St. Leonard's Road. The blue line is the trail that connects into Tyler State Park. That's where we got an $890,000 grant for that section of trail. The yellow, we had a $500,000 grant to build that section of trail from St. Leonard's Road up to Rockway. Those projects, as I said, are in design. And then this is the other trail project that I mentioned. To the left here is the Fur Drive Crossing. This little orange piece will be constructed with the signal. The purple will travel along Number 1 Lane Trail all the way into the park, into the parking lot. And then this section here, which is continued down below, takes the folks who use this trail and who park in Tyler into our Civic Center. And that will tie into an existing trail in the Civic Center. A little bit about real estate taxes. I like this graph because it shows how our assessment has changed over the last 14 years and how our tax rate has changed. The blue bars represent our total assessed valuation. Assessed valuation is important because that determines what the value of every mill of tax generates. And you can see that in 2010, our assessed value was almost $600 million. This is the value of the entire township property base as determined by the county. Now, it's not really $600 million. The county hasn't reassessed in 45 years. So what they apply is an equalization factor. So that represents probably 11% or 12% of the true value of our real estate. But it's used for determining the value of one mill of real estate tax. When we had the crash, the market crash in 2008, you can see what happened to our assessed valuation. Folks went back to the Board of Assessment. They got their assessments reduced, and our assessed value went down. In 2024, we are still not back to the 2010 assessed valuation. But we are getting there. And we're getting there from new development primarily. No one's going back to the Board of Assessment to increase their assessed valuation, once they got it reduced. But we are getting there with improvements in our downtown businesses and our goal of economic development in the villages. And I think you're seeing the product of that and the product of some new housing developments that have helped us with that number. So as that assessed valuation goes up, the value of one mill of tax goes up. So that's an important number. And the green line shows that from 2010 to about 2019, our tax rate was relatively flat. That's probably the time when we should have started to invest in our fire services. And we delayed it. And every year, Chief Helsker would come and say we should really think about enhancing our fire service. And we delayed it and delayed it for 10 years. And we're there now, folks. And this is now a critical public safety issue. And we are addressing it in this next year's budget. So what does it mean? Our median home assessment has actually gone up. It's almost $40,000 now. We have 13,000 residential properties in this community. That's the median home assessed value, which equates to an annual tax of $1,118 per year, about $93 per month. Compare that to your cable bill, your Hulu account cost, or anything else that you pay on a monthly basis, your electric bill. When I look at that, I say that is a bargain because for that, you are getting all of our township services, police, fire, EMS, roads, trash, parks and recreation, and all of the administration costs that go along with managing all of our various services. I hope I didn't miss any department. Our library, by the way, and our senior center, I don't want to forget those. Those are very important assets in this township. And I will end with the dollar bill. A lot of people don't realize it. A lot of people don't realize it, but our tax, our portion of the tax bill is 12% of the total. So for every dollar that a resident pays in real estate taxes, this township operates with 12 cents of that amount, 12 cents. The county is 15 cents and the school district is about 73 cents. So I think this is a great graphic because it shows that we do a lot with the money we get, and I think our residents get a lot of service for their tax dollars here. And I'm going to end with, and I don't know who wrote this, but I thought it was, I thought it was kind of nice. "The wise leader is a steward for his organization who tries to pass it along in slightly better condition than he found it." I can tell you that, my view is that this board is doing just that. You are doing everything you need to do to protect this community, and you are definitely passing it on in a better condition than you found it. That is my presentation this evening. I thank you for your support. I also want to thank my staff, who do all the work, and particularly Julie Narisi, who is sitting next to me, our finance director, our staff accountant, Alex Nagy, who is in the room here, and Lisa Russo, who all had an integral part, my executive assistant, who all had an integral part in putting the budget together. And without them, I could not sit here and give you this wonderful presentation. So thank you for your support.
Thank you, Bob. Before we go to questions from the board, I'll just want to echo, thank you for the hard work you guys did, Julie, you and your staff, Alex and Lisa in the back. If the camera can get on them, you should give a quick wave. I know they'll get angry with me, but you know, everybody gets on the camera for a minute. So, there they are. How about a quick wave from those guys? Enormous amounts of time, effort and hours go into preparing this budget. It's no small task. And the amount of detail that's there is just right. The descriptions that you gave today are fantastic. And you know, I don't, I'll be the last to comment, I want to pass the comments around, but just to say one thing, it is fantastic that, and I'm proud to sit on a board with people who really take to heart the obligation that they signed up for to do this job. And I liked really the way you started the presentation and you talked about the obligations of the supervisors. And it is an obligation. It's not one of those things where you can say, I want to or I don't want to. We have to provide, and the people of the town expect us to provide, the public safety. When they dial 911, police, fire, EMS, they expect service quickly, and they really don't want to hear why it didn't come. So thank you, thank you for that. I'll just go around, around the board, I'll start with our vice chair. Barry, do you have any comments?
No, I think, obviously echo a lot of things that Adam had said. Very, job well done. I've seen this budget like 10 times now, it's very, very impressive. You guys really do a great job of it. And it's exciting to be part of the board, we're doing so many things within the township. And on this board, we see a lot of residents every day and people are very happy with the township and all the services you provide. One thing I wasn't sure of, Bob, I think there's still one more thing. On Second Street Pike, isn't PennDOT offering to pave all the new roads?
Yes, I'm, listen, I'm sure there's plenty of other things I could have said. I can talk for another hour if you'd like.
Oh, that's all right. I wouldn't say that, but. No, I think one other thing, on PennDOT doing Second Street Pike, I would mention that.
Thank you for that, reminding me, yes. PennDOT has been planning to pave Second Street Pike for two years. Not only Second Street Pike, it's from Busselton to the Wrightstown Line, but Alms House Road from about Spencer to Holland was on their schedule two years ago. It got delayed, and now it's been delayed again till next year because we insisted that, as part of the project, and I guess they just missed it, that they need to replace some storm sewer pipes that are crossing under the road, they're collapsing. And we pointed that out to them, and I guess it was an oops, we didn't realize we had to do that. And so that did cause delay last year. There was no reason, in my view, that they couldn't have paved those roads this year. But you see them out there now on Alms House Road. That is not the final product, they are just doing some patch paving. And next year, hopefully, they get both of those roads paved. And J.D. Morrissey is the contractor hired by PennDOT to do that, and they do a very good job, but it's a matter of getting them out there to do the work.
And just on that point, the township put heat on, and with the assistance of Representative Marcel and Senator Farry on PennDOT, to at least get Alms House Road into a condition where it could last through the winter. Because it was, I can only describe it as driving on the moon, and it was really difficult. So they at least got out there and they're going to make it tenable until they do it next year. They're out there now, the next few days.
Yes.
Thanks, Barry.
Yeah, that's all I had to say.
Kim?
First of all, I want to say thank you so much to Bob, your staff, everybody. They've done a fabulous job, and I cannot be more proud of the work that you guys do. You make us look good here. But I'm very proud of this board because this board is special from all the other boards that we've had over the years. We care about, we care about the future, and we plan for the future. We realize, all of us take into account that the world is changing, and we're trying to think about what is important to our community. I had the honor of knocking on hundreds and hundreds of doors, talking to our residents. And I have to tell you that most of those residents, I would say 98%, care about public safety too. So this isn't something that we just came up with. Everybody cares about our public safety. And I feel, as a supervisor, besides the fact that public safety has to be our number one issue, I also feel, as a supervisor, and I feel that everybody else feels the same way too, that our job is to protect the people who protect us. And that is very, very important. We think about that all the time. We worry about, we're a bunch of warriors. We worry about everything in the township. But this is, this has been a great, this board is very, very conscious about what we care about, what we need to get done in the future. I understand, you know, it's always hard. We didn't raise tax, we don't raise taxes every year. But this is something so important when it comes to all, to keep our residents safe and sound. That's our number one, that's our number one priority. And unfortunately, for years, I feel that we hadn't been doing enough for our public safety. I feel that we are, we are getting, we are, we are doing what we have to do to keep our community as safe as possible. And I'm really proud of that fact. And I know it's a little bit of a tax increase, but it's an important one. It's not frivolous. And I like the way, Bob, you even, you went through with all of us, how cutting certain things that were not as pressing as what we have here. Everything that's in this budget is pressing. Our roads, our emergency services, our, you know, just the services that people have come to depend on, we have made sure that everything has stayed in place. And I really appreciate that. Especially with the roads too. Roads are so important, and they are important to our residents. And us keeping up with that 10 miles a year. I mean, I mean, in a perfect world, we would probably want to do more, but we're making it happen for those 10 miles. The other thing I wanted to say about this budget too, is that I'm really proud that we're also, this board is not kicking the can down the road. We are just owning it, taking responsibility and making sure our township is solid when it comes to emergency services and the things that are important to each and every one of us. So, what else did I want to say? I just want, like, I want to say that I love our township and I love everything that we're doing. And I feel like that we are looking into the future and taking care of our community. And that's the most important thing that we're doing. That's it.
May I add something?
Please.
That Dr. Rose triggered in my mind. We are deferring $1.6 million in capital, capital equipment replacements and so forth, and some infrastructure projects. I don't think it's a bad thing. We have traditionally taken loans, short-term loans, to replace equipment and pay for it over time, and we've been very lucky to get extremely low interest rates. This interest rate environment, in our view, the administration's view, was just too, too high. The interest rates were too high to justify taking loans next year. So we're taking a break in the budget, we're not going to take an equipment loan out. It'll give us an opportunity to pay down some of the existing loans without adding more debt. And I think we can look maybe at 2025 to start easing back in, but that again, will depend on the interest rate environment and the needs, frankly. We're going to have to at some point address the needs because we do want to keep our equipment in good shape.
Thanks, Bob. Paula, comments?
Very, very great job, Bob and staff. I am impressed. You know, coming, I'm one of the newbies on the board, but I wanted to mention how great this board is and the quality of life is our concern here, which we are, I'm kind of surprised how genuine and authentic everyone here is, because it was not my perception in the beginning. You know, I didn't realize how much share funding is done, and Bob, you go out of your way, you do magnificent job of that. And our public works, I want to mention our public works. I never, when I go through towns, I never see, you know, you see the three guys watching the one guy work. I don't, I don't see that with our township, and they're just, they're great. They're the public works people, and that's what makes a township good. And I think our leaders here are, it's filtering down and we are a great township. And we're a great board, we're a great township, and I'm really happy with the budget.
With phenomenal staff.
Thank you, Paula. Bob?
Thank you. Good evening. So I'm one of the first people to tease. I frequently say, I know two of the three people who are watching us on YouTube right now, and I see there are not many residents here right now, and I really hope I'm wrong about that. Of all the duties we're tasked with, I think this is the most important. And I hope all of our township residents watch this replay on YouTube so they see how their money is spent, the money that they have entrusted us to spend for their well-being, their benefit and their safety. And this is now my third budget meeting, and you learn a lot. Some of it's good, some of it's bad. One of the things that I'm dismayed to have learned over time, and you touched on it briefly, is that there are boards in the past that I believe, not maliciously, but probably being overly fiscally conservative, which I would have maybe before said is an impossibility, didn't think ahead. It was easy to say, this year we'll be fine, but they didn't think about this board sitting here. And part of our job is to think about the board that's going to be sitting here in five years, in 10 years. I plan to still be a resident here. Some of us will be, some of us won't be, but part of our duty, all of us, is to think about the future of this township. And I often say to Mr. Pellegrino and his staff, your job is to make us look good. And you consistently do that. And this is a perfect example of how, but our job now is to say, even if difficult decisions have to be made, we've trusted you to make us look good, and you've done so. We now have to trust what you're saying we need.
That's correct.
And we need these things. And there's some unpleasant trees that go with that. There's a tax increase. And I've said to this board in the executive session, I'll say it publicly, I will stand behind that because of why we're doing it. Would it have been nice to have set a precedent before? Sure. But I can't blame past boards for what they didn't do. I don't want future boards blaming us for what we did not do. This is now our duty. And I think this is a very fiscally responsible board, but we're not penny wise and dollar foolish. And I think prior boards may have been, and that's put us in this position. So now I think we've all agreed to do what we have to do, and we've all agreed to stand behind it. And I like that you broke it down, $93 a month, you can't go to dinner, and that's without drinks, just dinner for four, for $93 anywhere in this township. And you talk about a couple of quotes. My father always said, among other things, you get what you pay for. I think you get more than what you pay for here, for $93. You don't worry about the new firehouses unless it's your house on fire, then you're going to worry about them a lot. And I will briefly say, I'm going to take one example that you specifically cited, because we all come from different backgrounds, we have different knowledge bases, and mine in many ways was law enforcement. I was a prosecutor in this county for six years, unbelievably enough, 12 years ago. But in any event, crime is a hot button issue. That's something I'm asked about a lot because people believe I have some knowledge of it. I guess I do. You point to body cameras, and I think you said they were $500,000. And that's an easy thing to pull out of a budget and say, $500,000 for body cameras. I'm sure a solicitor will tell you, I bet you that's going to save us some costs in litigation over claims that go from a he said, she said, to there's the footage. I'll give you another thing you don't think about. A lot of cases will not go to trial and cost us the overtime for our officers to go to Doylestown, and it's not on their regular shift time because of those body cameras. So it's not always as it appears. That's an example of saying that I absolutely believe will pay for itself and then some over time. So it's not as simple as reading this budget, and anyone's free to come and do it. You have to dig a little deeper, and we've done that as a board. I think we've all consternated about this tremendously. I'm proud of your product, not that I'm going to take any credit for it, but that we all believe in it. And I do think this is the most important thing we do. So with that, I will use one other quote that you touched on that I was always taught, leave things better than you found them. And that's what I think this board is endeavoring to do. So thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. You're exactly doing that. You're leaving things better than the way you found them. One thing I'll say, and you know, I have decades of experience in local government, decades. This board has true vision, and you recognize your obligation to do what you were tasked to do as elected officials. I'm just the hired help. You make those decisions. We make it work for you based on what you tell us you want. And I really respect the fact that you bring vision to the community.
Just a couple last comments from me. So I did like, I like that you touched on the school resource officer. I think that's something we're all going to watch very carefully. There is enormous value, I talked to Chief LaComte about this in detail, there is enormous value to having police officers in schools. Not just for the safety, not just for the immediate action that they can take, but the relationship building that they do. The students get to learn who the police are, they get to learn who their community police are. They get to know and understand what their job is at a younger age, so as they get older, they get, they're more aware that they're there to help them. And more importantly, if they see them every day, they're more likely to bring a problem to them early. So I'm really happy, and I really hope, and I believe we will work something out with the school district and the school board folks to get that very necessary officer in there. in there. Thrilled about the 10 miles of road, and I just wanted to comment a little bit about the fire and EMS, because, of course, I couldn't help myself. But, you know, and you really touched on it well, it's really about response time. It's about response time. And I don't think most, most people really understand how big our township is. We're one of the biggest and most populated townships in the county. And I can tell you from an emergency response perspective, I can leave my house for a fire call, and I can drive eight miles and still be in Northampton Township. Not as the crow flies, but that's not how we travel. We travel on the road. So, you know, having that second station, Bob talked a lot about the Holland Station, and populating it with firefighters and paramedics, advanced life support folks. I think something that could easily get lost, but the original Holland Firehouse was built in 1966. A group of people recognized in 1966 that Holland was too far from Richborough to keep service. And so there's been a firehouse there since then. Unfortunately, it's just not able to be staffed properly with volunteers because of the enormous commitment it takes to do that job. So again, congratulations to the board. I guess we need a motion, huh?
Yes, so you're adopting, hopefully tonight, if you approve the motion, a preliminary budget. The second-class township code requires you to approve a preliminary budget, advertise it for public inspection for 20 days minimum, and then you may adopt it as a final budget. So that 20 days will start tomorrow, and we have, if you approve this budget tonight, we have the next December meeting adoption of the final budget. So a motion would be in order if you so choose.
Thank you. I believe Barry's going to make a motion.
Sure, yeah. I'd like to make, I move to adopt the 2024 preliminary budget and advertise it for availability for public inspection for a period of not less than 20 days as required by the second-class township code.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I think we had discussion, but is there any further discussion? Anyone from the board have anything else to say?
No.
Well, good. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Julie, and Alex and Lisa. Appreciate all the hard work.
Thank you, and thank you for your kind words.